Call this meeting of the Westland City Council to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Andrea Ruckausky.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Present.
Councilwoman Green.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg.
Here.
Pro Tem Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Ruckausky.
Present.
President Hart.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. For announcements and presentations, I have State Representative Kevin Coleman.
Thank you, City Council. Thank you, Council President, Administration, everybody in attendance tonight. Just wanted to briefly announce that we are going to be restarting our coffee hours, our monthly coffee hours, which are the second Monday of every month. This is going to take place at the Westland Public Library. The first one is going to be September 13th, that's a Monday, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m. at the Westland Public Library. So Commissioner Glenn Anderson and I are very excited to resume our coffee hours and see everybody in person. It's always exciting to hear from our constituents firsthand and answer questions in person. Of course, coffee and water will be provided, so very excited about that. And then also, I'm going to be doing a meet and greet separately, and this is going to take place Saturday, August 21st, at 11:00 a.m., and that's going to be at Homestead Kitchen, which is a coffee shop slash bakery. It's off of Wayne Road. It's in the strip mall where Carlos Mexican Restaurant is, so just south of the old art van, right here at 8036 North Wayne Road. So again, that's Saturday, August 21st, at 11:00 a.m. And then I'll save the updates for the coffee hour events, but if anybody has any questions, feel free to let me know. And of course, if anybody wants to call our office, our phone number is (517) 373-2576. Our email is kevincoleman@house.mi.gov. And my cellphone, if anybody who's listening wants to call me directly, leave me a message. I'll get back to you. My cellphone number is (734) 751-6321. So feel free to reach out anytime. Really honored to represent you up in Lansing. And I'll just say that as a Westland resident, I'm very excited about tomorrow to get out and exercise my right to vote. I wish you all luck in the primary, and I think it's always exciting to see how everybody does. So good luck to everybody. Good night.
Thank you. We now open up questions or input on the agenda from the public. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items today that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked will be answered during the agenda item following a motion in support from the council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? Is there anyone in the back? All right, seeing none, we'll close. Public comment on the consent, excuse me, on the agenda, move to the consent calendar. Motion by Councilman Londo, support by Councilman Hersberg. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Any changes to the consent calendar? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 19, 2021. Approval of request from the Wayne Westland Figure Skating Club to hold a fundraising event to raise funds to purchase long-term investment items for the ice show at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena, 6210 North Wildwood, on September 12, 2021, between 1:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., and to waive all applicable permits and fees associated with the request. Approval of bid for professional ordinance, professional zoning ordinance update services. Administration recommended the low bidder waive trim in the amount not to exceed $60,470 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of purchase and installation of a 10-foot dump box, underbody scraper, and front plow from Versa Lift Midwest for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $85,418. Approval of purchase of a brush chipper from Vermeer for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $87,352. Approval of purchase of a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner from Fredrickson Supply for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $367,644.49. Approval of purchase of three F-250 trucks from North Brothers Ford for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $86,220. Approval of purchase of a log grappler attachment from Michigan CAT for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $7,240. Approval of purchase and installation of three plows from Versa Lift Midwest for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $18,687. Approval of purchase of a single-axle truck chassis from Wolverine Freightliner for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $90,546. Approval of emergency contract concrete repair expense at Fire Station 3 in the total amount not to exceed $66,245. The city will utilize the city council-approved asphalt and concrete repair contract with K&amp;B Asphalt. Approval of a one-year audiovisual service agreement extension with SVT, amount not to exceed $16,755. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of purchase agreement between the City of Westland and Carol Burkhardt Living Trust for a vacant lot located on North Globe Street in the amount of $15,967.56 plus associated closing costs and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Moving to new business. New business, item one, request for closed study session on August 16, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. to consult with legal counsel regarding opioid legislation and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Motion by Councilman McDermott. Support by Councilwoman Ruckausky. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you very much. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruckausky.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item two, confirmation of reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 18, 2025.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. We ask you tonight to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Fries is in the audience here tonight. He has been a, he's been a great addition to the DDA Board. He brings us a small-business owner's flair to the board, and he represents the Wayne Road Business District extremely well. He's graduated John Glenn High School, and you may have remembered that his father served in the original DDA Board under Mayor Thomas, so would ask you tonight for your consideration his reappointment to a new four-year term that'll expire on July 18, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held July 19, 2021. Approval of request from the Wayne Westland Figure Skating Club to hold a fundraising event to raise funds to purchase long-term investment items for the ice show at the Mike Madonna Ice Arena, 6210 North Wildwood, on September 12, 2021, between 1:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m., and to waive all applicable permits and fees associated with the request. Approval of bid for professional ordinance, professional zoning ordinance update services. Administration recommended the low bidder waive trim in the amount not to exceed $60,470 and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of purchase and installation of a 10-foot dump box, underbody scraper, and front plow from Versa Lift Midwest for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $85,418. Approval of purchase of a brush chipper from Vermeer for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $87,352. Approval of purchase of a truck-mounted combination sewer cleaner from Fredrickson Supply for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $367,644.49. Approval of purchase of three F-250 trucks from North Brothers Ford for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $86,220. Approval of purchase of a log grappler attachment from Michigan CAT for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $7,240. Approval of purchase and installation of three plows from Versa Lift Midwest for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $18,687. Approval of purchase of a single-axle truck chassis from Wolverine Freightliner for the Department of Public Service, amount not to exceed $90,546. Approval of emergency contract concrete repair expense at Fire Station 3 in the total amount not to exceed $66,245. The city will utilize the city council-approved asphalt and concrete repair contract with K&amp;B Asphalt. Approval of a one-year audiovisual service agreement extension with SVT, amount not to exceed $16,755. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval of purchase agreement between the City of Westland and Carol Burkhardt Living Trust for a vacant lot located on North Globe Street in the amount of $15,967.56 plus associated closing costs and authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement on behalf of the city. Moving to new business. New business, item one, request for closed study session on August 16, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. to consult with legal counsel regarding opioid legislation and to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state law pursuant to MCL 15268E and H.
Motion by Councilman McDermott. Support by Councilwoman Ruckausky. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any dissent?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you very much. Roll call.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruckausky.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. New business, item two, confirmation of reappointment of Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term with the term to expire July 18, 2025.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilman Godbout. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. We ask you tonight to confirm the reappointment of Mr. Jason Fries to the Downtown Development Authority. Mr. Fries is in the audience here tonight. He has been a, he's been a great addition to the DDA Board. He brings us a small-business owner's flair to the Board, and he represents the Wayne Road Business District extremely well. He's graduated John Glenn High School, and you may have remembered that his father served in the original DDA Board under Mayor Thomas, so would ask you tonight for your consideration his reappointment to a new four-year term that'll expire on July 18, 2025.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any discussion from the council? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations. For, for purposes of item three, new business, I will be passing the gavel to Council President Pro Tem Michael Londo, and I'll be abstaining due to conflict of interest. I am an employee for Verizon Wireless.
New business, item three, adoption of prepared resolution to abandon, terminate, and release a certain easement and accept a revised easement and water and sewer main dedication for partial number 56027990001000. This is Verizon Wireless, located at 39400 Ford Road.
Motion by Councilman Godbout. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman McDermott. Mo, did you have anything on this?
I do not.
Oh.
This is, this was approved August 17.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I don't have anything to report on this. This is part of, in addition to the existing Verizon Wireless building at that address. The site plan for that addition was approved last year, August 2020, and this is just dedicating the new easement for purposes of that new addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yub. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Godbout.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg.
Yes.
Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruckausky.
Yes.
President Hart.
Abstaining.
Motion passes.
Now pass the gavel back to President Hart.
Thank you.
New business, item four, approval of voucher.
Motion by Councilman Godbout.
Support.
Supported by Councilwoman Ruckausky. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. We now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the orderly business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. The clock will not be stopped once it is started. Is there anyone on my right? Yes.
My name is Patricia Dyke. I live at 6725 North Wildwood Street. I've lived there since 1965. I'd like to speak about the proposed bike path. The Wildwood Street is the main street to get into the subdivision. It is a fire route. Everybody that lives in the subdivision has to come out to Wildwood to get out of the subdivision. We don't need any more traffic with bikes. We don't need any more liability with bikes. If someone would go sit there and watch the traffic on Wildwood, we have enough of it. I would like to see signs at the beginning and end of Wildwood that says "No Through Traffic." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on my left?
My name is Joan Watson, and I, I live in Westland on whatever street. And I'm here because on the 30th, 28th of last month, we had a torrential rain, and that torrential rain flooded my car. My car was parked in, I live at West Haven Manor, my car was parked in the parking lot under the structure, and my car, when my insurance came out, my car was totaled. And it was two years old. I felt very bad because I had just made the comment to somebody, best car I ever had. Well, I did get a new one, and I am satisfied with it, but there was no way for me to know that our area was going to be flooded. And I feel very bad about it. I don't want it to happen again. I'm sure some of you have heard that already about, about the flood that we had. Fortunately, it did not get into our building, but did damage three or four other cars besides mine. And, and that was a total loss. I'm not here to ask you to do anything for me, but I would like to know what we can do to prevent that from happening again. So I leave it up to you.
I'm sure some answers will come out at some point here. We don't have an answer at this exact moment, so I don't, we don't have an answer, I don't think anybody has an answer for your right at this moment, so, but it's something we'll be talking about in depth.
Good. I hope so. I'd like to make sure if somebody comes out there, takes a look at the situation.
Sure.
There was, the drain, I think, was on the other side of the fence in our backyard, and that drain overflowed. I don't think there was anything anybody could do about it, but maybe we can prevent it from happening again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the back? Yes.
My name is Pauline Aki, and I was here last meeting talking about the Marshall turning it into a rec center, or community center, which I think is more apt as community center after walking through it and talking to people who actually kind of knew what they were talking about, because we had a very hard time in the very beginning finding someone who actually knew anything. And I do want to say Aubrey is amazing. She really is. She's top-notch. That being said, looking at all the boards and, you know, having people put what their ideas, where most of them were for activities, the amenities, number one was pool. That's what everyone is thinking, this is going to go there, is an Olympic-sized pool. I don't know how that is possible. I don't know any of that, but I, but walking through and seeing and talking with Aubrey especially, she answered all of our questions, and when she didn't know, she said, "I don't know." I respect that, instead of trying to BS your way through it, because that's what a lot of them did. That being said, it'd be very interesting to see this process work its way through the ideas and what's possible, what's not possible, will YMCA come in, will they, how much of the building do they want to take over, are they going to pay for what they want? Because their, their pictures were, if any of you have seen them, were pretty spectacular, you know? Yes, everyone would want that. I don't know if that's what the city can afford to do. Back in 2012, when the Bailey Center closed, Mayor Wild had said that the Bailey Center, the Bailey Recreation Center had lost over $4 million in the last five years. We don't want to get ourselves in that position again. We don't want to. And it'd be a shame to put money into this, and then all of a sudden, it's not feasible, we're losing money, and then, especially like you guys said about a lease, it goes back to the school district after all that money was put in. So I just really would encourage you guys to make sure that these numbers work for the citizens. And yes, we would love a pool, but we have a small-business coliseum, or the forum that has a pool. Maybe we do a community partnership and help small businesses. We have three gyms within, what, mile and a quarter? Do community partnership. And that actually came from Dan Byer. That was his, that was his thing, which I thought was kind of brilliant, if you ask me. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody on my right? Yes.
Hi, my name's Karen. My husband Carl, we've lived on Berry Street for about seven years. When we first moved in, on the southeast corner of Berry Street and Stacy, there used to be a sidewalk, and the sidewalk kind of crumbled and fell apart, and the homeowner pulled the sidewalk out and put grass in. My husband's disabled. He likes to go for a walk and like walk around on the sidewalk to be safe. He almost got in trouble for walking on the grass. They said it was their property now. I'd like to propose that we have a sidewalk reinstalled at that corner so that he can walk safely around that corner.
And I did have the police officers come out, and he told us, because they blocked the sidewalk with their vehicles, I know it's a corner lot, for some reason they keep getting told they got special benefits because it is a corner lot, they can do that. I don't think that's right. I was told by the officer that I should walk around the vehicles and don't worry about it, just stay far enough you, you think you're not on his property. Well, I did. Well, I have bills from my doctor's office, because I wiped out in his driveway. I had glass taken out of my arms, I twisted my back, and he sat there and laughed, because that night we had problems and the cops came back, the police officers came back again. And that's when he tried getting me a ticket for walking on the lawn, which actually was, and even, and even the officer told him, hey, that's, that's actually the sidewalk. But then I'm getting told to walk around his vehicles and everything. Well, like I said, I got pictures and everything from my doctors. Did, do I go after him for that? Does the city help me out with those bills? I don't have insurance. I blew my knee out again, and I don't know what to do, because I, everyone else in the world, hey, if I was from somewhere else, maybe I'd have it. I, I, no. Okay, I'm sorry.
You need to calm down. I'm sorry. He gets excited because...
No worries.
It's, it's real stressful, because he does like to go for a walk when he can go for a walk. So I don't know if there's something that can be done.
Well, the mayor's indicated he'd like to say something about it, so Mayor?
Thank you, through the chair. Mayor, would you mind giving us your name and phone number tonight? My planner back here, Mo in the corner.
Okay, okay.
Why don't you give us the address, and then tomorrow we'll take a look and we'll bring up and look at those property lines and, and see.
And they also did have like a handicap sign put in, because they have a handicapped child, an autistic child that takes a bus to school, but where they have it, they try to park there all the time, and there's not enough room between the handicap sign and the driveway for the people next door. The people next door have to drive over their grass to go around their car.
I think that's wrong. It should be moved up, because even the officer came out about that, too, because his father-in-law parks there all the time, and he's not handicapped, and he parks there, and they just, they just keep letting them out.
I hate to interrupt, but we have hit our three-minute rule. I have to stick to it.
Oh, I didn't know. I'm sorry, sir.
So if you could, just go ahead and get with Mo. You can get with him right now, we're out back, and he'll get all your information for you.
All right, thank you.
Or you can sit, whatever you want, whatever you prefer.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, where was I? All right, anyone on my left? Yes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Candy Holton. I took a tour of Upper Marshall Saturday. There was a lot of planning as far as amenities being offered and services being offered to the community, actually, and the only thing that I had some questions about that the facility, the YMCA group was not able to actually answer was how are we going to make the services inclusive to all residents on the north and the south side of Westland? They wasn't able to actually answer that question, considering we don't already have something in place for the library, so I was wondering from the council, is that something you all are going to incorporate into these new services we're offering the community? Or no? Are we going to maybe talk about it, think about it?
I think we're still at the information gathering phase, and I think you're giving us some input, and there's a lot more input coming in, so all of these inputs are going to go, and I think we still have a lot more sand in the jar, in the glass than we have coming out, so all the information that we keep getting is going to continue to go to our decision-making process.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you. My name is Candy Holton.
Anybody in the rear? No? Yes?
Hello, everybody. A little bit lighter tonight.
My name is Toni Parton. I'm a precinct delegate for Westland 30. Thank you for being here. As we all are aware, tomorrow is our primary, and we've got a chance to build back better with hope and change. Together, we can bring forth reform, prosperity, and peace, and be Westland's comeback team. We are stronger together. We can do this. 14 years is long enough. You should be one of the thousand points of light to make Westland great again. Thank you.
All right, anybody on my right? Lady in the back, you raised your hand. I'm calling on you. Yes, sorry.
I'm totally shocked. I came to a meeting at the park on the 25th of June for the Wildwood Bike Trail. I then came to a council meeting around the 19th of July at City Hall with information about how my neighbors were against it, and the majority at the park meeting were against it. Absolutely no one responded on council when I spoke, except Pete, who told the truth, there's not enough room. I then hear a few days later that there was a ribbon-cutting ceremony. I was told by one of you that you would get in touch with me when you found something out, and I never heard back. Gail Dickerson and I went out with petitions, which no one gave me a time limit to have them back in by. We went from Warren Road to Westland Apartments, and then from Cherry Hill to Almost Palmer. The majority of the people do not want this. Only three were for it, and two, Gail said, were for it, and one was either way. This is including all ages. While we were getting the petitions signed, two residents on Wildwood near Warren told me that two separate incidents where a street lighter pole had been hit by two drunk drivers. Gail said the same thing. Last year, my neighbor's car was hit and pushed up on my front easement, and as I've said before, Cherry Hill has many flowers for deceased family members. And as a resident by Cherry Hills, a resident by Cherry Hill said that there was two accidents within two hours. When we were at the park, they said that they haven't had any accidents on Wildwood. Why are we being lied to? I'm trying to figure out what you all are thinking. Are people's lives not important? What happened to we, the people? Why are we not being heard? Why are we not given the chance to do something? Gail and I collected 60 signatures and intended to get more. Please answer me. How is this getting passed without a chance to do something?[1733.86] getting passed without a chance to do something? I was driving down Wildwood, and there were painting already. Really, I have never heard of a 30 to 35-day proposal passed without even letting the people decide. What about our constitution? Where is the democracy? It's not safe. Does one have to die first? I surely wouldn't want that on my hands. You are all here to serve the people. What happened to that?
I have the petitions here. I'm not getting a response.
All right, is there anyone on my left? Yes?
Sarah Austin, Westland resident. So I just wanted to say, I'm so excited for this weekend for Blues Brews and Barbecue. It was sad to not have it last year, but I'm so excited that it's back. And quite frankly, the best fireworks show that's anywhere around will be happening this weekend. So, thank you for everyone who put in the effort to be able to make it happen this year. I also want to send a preemptive thank you to the unsung heroes of tomorrow's election. For those of you that don't know, there are many Westland residents who serve as election officials and volunteers tomorrow during the election. It's a very long day that starts at 6:00 a.m., and quite frankly, they're lucky if they're leaving the building and going home by 9 o'clock at night. It's, quite frankly, one of the biggest services that our, that our residents can do. And I just want to preemptively say thank you to the city, to the city clerk's office and the election officials tomorrow that will be giving a whole lot of their day, sitting in our buildings, letting us come in and be part of the democratic process. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody in the back? Anybody on my right? Sir?
Richard Graham, from Westland, and with Move Westland Forward. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Good luck to all the candidates running in tomorrow's primary. Also, thank you to the clerk's office for everything that they're doing. Some items tonight. Unfortunately, there was so little new business on the agenda tonight. This is the 15th council meeting this year, and there has been only two to three that has, had had any significant new business on the agenda. Sad what continues to happen. This question was asked two meetings ago, but with no answer. Residents have also been calling City Hall for an answer, but no response. Residents want to know. It is being reported by many that our trash company is picking up the black and blue bins at the same time. They have seen it. Has recycling stopped? Why is this happening? Regarding Deborah Folks, who's running for City Council, documentation, also she has verified in her comments that there are significant issues with her election paperwork at City Hall. Four years ago, when she ran, she had issues with her property taxes, and along with not coming prepared to, to a meeting that I attended where she was secretary. Mayor Wild has endorsed her, and it appears nothing can be done, or no one will provide a formal response for this issue. Pure Team Wild. Mayor Wild, you commented two meetings ago, about seven years ago, I started a one-person war. Really? You decided to use the word "war"? Do you realize how many people have died in wars to protect our country? Shameful you use this word to describe our relationship. And do you really believe I am that important to your failures or successes that you would use the word "war"? Again, residents want to know. Last election, there were plenty of voters, even ones that voted for you, that were not happy that before you even were sworn in, you decided to run for Congress. And this is by your application with the Wayne County Finance Group. So again, if you are sworn in as mayor in January '22, will you serve your full term as mayor? You answered this question four years ago, when I asked. Again, residents want to know. Pretty simple. You not going to answer? Unfortunately, and we see it tonight, that there's just usually no answers to questions that are raised by residents. It happens. There's a select few that their questions are answered, because they're in the inner circle, but shameful again. I'll be back in two weeks. I'll do it again. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes?
Hi. I wanted to break it up a little bit. Okay. With that being said, I just wanted to thank Mayor Wild, Vic Barra, I don't know if you've seen her. I actually went to the Marshall event as well. I'm Melissa Sampe, sorry. Whew, deep breaths. And I thought it was fantastic. I thought every single step of the way, and I agree, Aubrey did an amazing job. The YMCA staff was amazing as well. My son was there with his friend. The possibilities are endless. And it just makes me so excited and happy that my 14-year-old is excited about a project in the city. So, I just wanted to say thank you. And also, Ms. Austin brought up, thank you to everyone who's working the election around, and good luck.
Is there anyone out back? Anyone on the right? Sir?
Hello, Pastor Edward Pruitt here. I just had a few comments that I wanted to make. Thank you to the clerk's office for all the hard work they've been doing throughout this election, and then what's going to happen tomorrow. So I appreciate all the hard work that you're doing. There was a comment around the flooding issues, that residents are still having issues regarding that. It's still a concern, because we've had opportunities over the last 11 years, from the last flooding issue, where that could have been resolved if there were proper fiscal management that was occurring. There could be a significant amount of money, millions of dollars, to be able to help with infrastructure changes. Regarding the bike way, bike path, we mentioned that before, that the residents were against it. And the administration mentioned that they were going to go forward with it. We see some actions of that occurring. And even a resident showed me today, a number around 60 signed saying they do not want this. That's significant for that road. We have to take into account what the residents are speaking and what they're saying. Because if indeed we're not, we're doing what we want, and not doing what we're entrusted to do. When we look at concerns that residents have had, they feel like they're not being heard. They feel like they're not being listened to. They feel like they are constantly being pushed off and pushed to the side, so that the will of the elected officials can go forth. That shouldn't be the case. Even if it's not, the perception shouldn't be there. It takes strong leadership and responsible leadership to make sure that the residents feel and know that they are being treated fairly and correctly and heard. Recently, I got email, an email, which I continuously get emails and proof of residents not being heard. And today, I got one on the way here, got permission to share it. And it was simply a resident asking, hey, what's going on with the parks? The questions that were asked, which were kind of innocuous, which is how many of the Westland City Parks have porta-potties? How many of the City Westland Parks do not have porta-potties? How many total city parks are there? They got forwarded off to another person, but this was directed to Kyle Mulligan, Parks and Rec's director. Why are we not addressing our residents? Why are we pushing our residents off? Why are we continuously not doing the job that we are elected to do? We're in a time that you got to do your job. Our residents here feel like they're not being heard. They feel like you're not doing your job, and we have to do it. That's what we're entrusted to do. That's our responsibility. Thank you.
Is there anyone on my left? Yes?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. It's good to see everyone, and I'm thankful that everyone made it through this pandemic, and it's good to see your all's faces. But one of the things I want to say tonight is, I think Westland is a great city, and I do think that there has to be a great leader to lead a city like Westland. As long as my husband and I has been living in the city, Mayor Wild, I want to thank you. You are a man of integrity. You know, it's very interesting how a lot of people can come up here at this stand and give all the negativity that they have in them. And if that's what they have in them, I would like to know if they were up there, what would come out of them for this city. So, I know, for as long as we live here, you have done a lot of great things for this city. My husband and I have always gotten reports from the City Council. You have an amazing board. We went to the Marshals on Sunday, the upper room, the upper elementary marshal, where they're planning to make a new recreation center for the youth. And I have to say that it was very organized. We walked in the door, we was greeted politely, and there was more than one person that was able to answer questions. And when you have something like this, that you start from the beginning, you're not going to have all the answer on day one. So I just want to thank Westland and everyone here in the City Council for all the work that you have done, and looking forward to what's coming. So, thank you.
Is there anyone out back? Is there anyone on the right? All right, we'll close the distance comments and move to comments from the administration.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for being here tonight. And I want to thank everybody that came out to the Marshall Open House for the last couple Saturdays. And it was a very, I thought it was very organized, too. I thought that we had a lot going on. We had, obviously, Aubrey and the city staff was working hand-in-hand with the folks from Plant, Moran, Cressa. We had the library that was there. We had the YMCA that was there. So there were a lot of things going on, but I think at the end of the day, all of us were probably, the one thing I kept hearing was that the school was in a lot better shape than a lot of people thought it was. So I think we have a lot to work with. We're going to go back and collate all the information that we collected over the last couple Saturdays. And Plant, Moran, Cressa's been crunching down some numbers for council, so we'll, we'll take a look, and we'll schedule some time. And I'm expecting we're going to have a lot more public comment on this. So, would ask everybody to, please be patient with us. And with that said, just a couple of things. I want to thank the police chief tonight for recognizing former city attorney Angelo Plakis and former 18 District Court Judge, Judge Bokas, C. Charles Bokas, tonight with the dedication you did before the council meeting tonight in the new training center at the police department. I think it was very well, well-received, and just the amount of former police officers that came back, and a lot of people that, that the judge and Angelo Plakis, they touched their lives over their careers. It was great to see a lot of people come back like that. Good luck tomorrow to all the candidates that are in the election. We appreciate the residents' time that it takes to vote, and to do your due diligence, and for participating. And also, good luck to the clerk and your staff and your election workers. I know you're, you're very well-prepared. You're, you're ready for the election, and we wish you the best on a, on a smooth delivery. Then the last thing is just, once we get past the election, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody at Blues Brews and Barbecue this weekend. Looks like the weather's going to be phenomenal. We're going to be out there Friday night. The fun starts at 5:00, and we'll go till 11:00. And then on Saturday night, we're going to go until 10:00, and then we're going to kick off the drone show for 10 minutes to celebrate the city's 55th anniversary, then followed by what Sarah Austin said tonight, the best fireworks in town. So, we look forward to seeing everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Anything from the attorney's office today?
No, thanks.
Okay. Before moving to council comments, I'll have no comments if the rest of the council does, and it's up to you. But in order to give everybody and the clerk an opportunity to get some rest, and everybody else tomorrow, that's fine. But if you do have comments, we can do comments. But I'm okay passing through to the council comments if everyone else is.
I have comments.
You have comments? Okay. I'll just go with you, Councilwoman Green.
Thank you. I would like to address one of the residents who came to the podium regarding your concern with the bike path. I would like to say that I think you have a valid concern regarding the speed over on Wildwood. I was at that community meeting at the park that they had, and I did witness the majority of the feedback that the city received during that particular rollout or introduction meeting was anti-bike path. And if you have collected 60 signatures from people who reside on Wildwood Street, I think that is something that the city should look at, because it will directly impact the residents who live on that street. There are instances in the city of Westland where we have to make hard decisions, and not everybody is going to agree. Sometimes we get 50-50 in terms of agreement, and sometimes we don't. But we have to attempt to make the best decision for Westland citizens. But in this instance, there is a serious, I believe, there is a serious safety concern that should be acknowledged and considered. And if you have 60 homeowners on the street of Wildwood that are opposed, I do not believe in a government forcing their will onto citizens without taking a careful look at, at what the potential outcome could be. If someone is to get injured or hurt on that street, you know, where do we go from, from there? And I've been on Wildwood, and I've seen the cars speeding down the street. I'm not, and I've talked to some of the residents who live on Wildwood. I drive on Wildwood. I see them blow through those stop signs over there. And, and I'm just not in agreement with glitz and glamour or ribbon cuttings for the benefit of a press conference, when we do have lives at stake. There are other cities that have done similar projects, that put in bike paths on streets that were even busier than Wildwood, but you very rarely see any traffic. No, I, I very rarely see anyone put their lives at risk to do that. And I think if the city is adamant about installing a bike path, we might want to consider a location to where we do not already have issues with, with somewhat of a consistent speeding problem in that area. So, again, it, it will be a council decision. Watch how we vote. If we vote against your interests, then remember that during election season. There's an election tomorrow. I think it's a valid point. Also, I would like to wish everyone a happy election day tomorrow, and please let your voices be heard. If you are able to call a friend and remind them that the polls are open from 7:00 a.m., they will close at 8:00 p.m. And you can, if you're able to maybe give someone a ride, please do so. It's important that every citizen's voice is heard here in the city. The seven of us represent approximately 85,000 people, and we don't always see the representation that our residents deserve, especially when there are a, there is a repetitive plea for the slightest bit of consideration for, for, for issues that, that we could take a second look at. So, thank you for bringing that concern to our attention. And I would hope that before we move forward with just doing that, that we think twice about the lives of, of the people on that street, and figuring out a way to control the speed before we install that, before anything is installed over there. And again, the seven of us represent 85,000 people. And I don't, I, I will say for the record, I was not aware of a ribbon cutting on, on Wildwood, nor have I, nor would I have attended that, because I, I'm not in agreement. This is not an instance to where I believe we have to do what is best for our community. And a bike path on Wildwood does not benefit the majority of Westland residents. So it's a decision of, will we just move in a, a way that disregards the concern of the people who are paying taxes over there? Or do we maybe consider the fact that we're not always right, just because we're elected officials? Thank you.
Are there any comments from council tonight? Any other comments from council tonight? Is there a motion to adjourn?
For Rukowski, Londo.